I'd like to call the meeting to order if we can say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I'd like to take a roll call of everybody here. Paul Steinle, board president.
Mark Smith, board member.
Jean Ernst, vice president.
Dominic Villo, board member.
Lori Goldhawk, board member.
Jessica McLaughlin.
Go for Jess.
Okay, Jessica McLaughlin, board member.
Lynn Arrington, board member.
Tony Pinella, superintendent.
Lynn Shanahan, assistant superintendent.
Mike Bellisle, the other assistant superintendent.
Laura Bezinski, school business administrator.
And Debbie Custody, district clerk.
Great. So we have no visitors wishing to speak in our in our call and we have no written communication. Do we have any reports of any boards or committees?
I attended the ECASB budget and finance committee last week virtually. This is probably my fourth or fifth. It's they become very routine. We approve the budget. There's not a lot of variables in the budget. So that was very straightforward. You should have gotten an announcement on the Rick Timms presentation coming up. Looking for head nods. Did anybody get that?
Yeah.
So that was discussed. And then some more calendar items for the balance of the year, but those will all come out from David. So it was a pretty routine meeting. Nothing, nothing very different report.
Great. Anyone else? Great. We'll move right into the superintendent's report then.
Well, yeah, thanks. I appreciate you guys flexibility in switching the meeting to this virtual format. Also, you may have seen we had a few agenda changes over the last 48 hours or so. I do want to give a little context to that. Originally, I had intended to provide us with an update on tests to stay, which I'm sure you've heard a lot about, but it essentially allows close contacts the ability to test every day before school, unvaccinated close contacts, I have you, in order to be able to attend school. However, we received a memo yesterday that from the state education department, I'm sorry, from the state department of health, indicating that there might be more information forthcoming on tests to stay guidance. And then today, you may have seen Governor Hochul announced that contact tracing is no longer mandated in New York State. So at this point, you know, I think it would be prudent for us to hold off a little bit on test to stay programming, given the significant cost and labor involved in implementing that program before we, you know, move ahead of what the state might be moving towards in terms of pandemic related mandates and programs. So I, at the last minute, I decided to remove that from the agenda. So I didn't present a program that changes again tomorrow or by the end of the week, you know, because it seems like things are moving in that direction. So I called our my friends at Smallwood and I put them back on the agenda for tonight's update and they graciously agreed to go back on the agenda after I removed them from the agenda, knowing that we had this format. So I do appreciate Mr. Crozier and Mrs. Martin, your flexibility. I think we looked at this presentation together in this format over Zoom and I guaranteed them that we would be presenting this in person. And I guess the only guarantee we have in the pandemic era is that things are subject to change. So I really do appreciate your flexibility and your understanding and your willingness to be here. So with that being said, I'd like to start with our Smallwood Drive Elementary School update.
Well, thank you, Mr. Pinella. And one thing the pandemic has provided all of us is flexibility, right? So we are, we are prepared to be as flexible as possible this evening. And we want to thank you, Superintendent Pinella and the board for this opportunity for Mrs. Martin and I to present on a school that we absolutely love working at. It's truly an honor and privilege to serve as the building administrators at Smallwood. Tonight, Mrs. Martin and I are excited to use our voices to share how Smallwood Drive has transitioned back to in-person learning and to highlight the wonderful initiatives that have occurred at our school in recent months. But before we share those initiatives, I need to mention the hard work, the commitment and dedication that has occurred behind the scenes in planning and preparing that has led to where we are today. The past two years have been very challenging for our entire school community. And if it was not for our amazing faculty and staff, who truly are instructional leaders in action, the highlights that we are about to proudly share would not have been possible. Our team at Smallwood has reinvented how to teach and connect with children over the past 22 months. And in doing so, we have recreated a school with a focus on providing memorable elementary school experiences and a community that truly cares for one another. There's one particular board member who has served on our reopening task force over the past two years and has made such a difference here at Smallwood. We'd like to recognize Mrs. Jessica McLaughlin for her representation of efforts as an active member of our SDS team. Thank you, Jessica, for supporting our building and providing our students with procedures and protocols that have resulted in a safe and healthy school here at Smallwood. I am very proud to share with the Board of Education that 88% of our teachers here at Smallwood serve on committees. In addition to the SDS reopening task force, the teaching and learning, social and emotional learning committees, our ELA, math, science, technology, our mindfulness, behavior, and MTSS committees meet regularly and are active, are active in our building. In preparation to welcome students back, all of our committees have dedicated a significant amount of time over the past two summers to support the transition to returning back to in-person learning. As a result, I'm pleased to share that the physical, emotional, social, and intellectual health of our school community continues to be a top priority. In an effort to share our highlights in a clear and concise way, Mrs. Martin and I have decided to return to the district's three priorities, which have been the foundation of our strategic plan for several years. This evening, we'll be highlighting Smallwood's initiatives from student life, learning and achievement, and Amherst Pride. There are several initiatives that we are proud to highlight as part of student life here at Smallwood. Start this evening off, we're proud of our initiatives connected to social emotional learning. We recognized as a building the importance of supporting students with their feelings and providing them with the necessary skills to react to those feelings in a positive way. Our Skill of the Week initiative teaches students a wide variety of skills, including listening to learn, focusing attention, following directions, self-talk, being assertive, and identifying feelings for yourself and feelings in others. We have dedicated time to teaching and reinforcing these skills in our building, and we are recognizing the differences it is making with our little ones in the classroom. Our Skill of the Week is introduced by Mrs. Noe and Rory on our Friday morning announcements. Let's take a look.
So Rory, this year, we're going to help our students at Smallwood with some special skills that help us to be good learners and help us to be good friends.
My teacher was talking about that, Mrs. Noe.
Yeah. So do you want to know what it is for next week?
What is it?
Next week, the skill is listening to learn.
Oh, Mrs. Noe, sometimes Rory has a difficult time listening.
I'm ready for our third skill of the week.
Third one. Okay, we're ready.
So this week, boys and girls, it is following directions. So Rory, it kind of builds on those two skills that we've been working on. So if you remember, last week was focusing attention and the week before that was listening, right?
Yep, those are the two.
So when we're following directions, we need to listen and hear them, right? We need to focus our attention so we can remember them, right? And now we need to actually follow through with what the directions are that are given to us because it's really important to follow directions. So we do the right thing and we know what we're supposed to do.
For you.
I'm good. Did you know that we have a new skill this week and it's also the character trait this month?
Let's see, I think we're up to E.
We are. What is it?
E for empathy.
You're right. So today, we're going to keep talking about identifying our own feelings.
Okay.
But I think today we should start talking about how to manage like really strong emotions. What do you think?
Yeah, sometimes, sometimes we all have strong emotions.
We do. So last week.
This year's overall theme at Smallwood that is very much connected to teaching skills is using our voice in a powerful way. Recognizing that the pandemic silenced many of our voices for a time, our mindfulness committee believed that we needed to inspire our school community to make a difference using their voices in a positive way this school year. As a way to kick off this initiative, I read the book, My Voice is a Trumpet by author Jimmy Allen to our faculty and staff on opening days and to all of the children in their classrooms in September. I also read the book to our parents on Zoom at our first SDS PTA meet. At the conclusion of each reading, I asked our community to think about ways that they could use their voice in a positive way to make a difference in our school year. Smallwood would like to thank Dr. Shanahan, who wrote an SEL grant that allowed us to purchase a copy of this book for every classroom this year. In addition, we've been in contact with author Jimmy Allen for a possible in-person or virtual visit in the spring. For time purposes, I will not read the entire thing, but do want to give you a flavor of the book that is inspiring all of Smallwood this year to use our voices in a positive way. I'll use my voice to find joy in others, reminding us all that we're sisters and brothers. There's a voice that is silent, but still can be heard with hands that move to speak every word. Then there's a voice that roars like a lion, a big voice that tells you, always keep trying. I'll learn to speak up, to show I am strong, to stand for what's right, and to know what feels wrong. Elementary school is about making memories. We were so pleased that our students were able to celebrate Halloween at school this year. At grade level assemblies, Mr. Nels Ross presented on making healthy choices to conclude our red ribbon week. With the weather being so cooperative this year, our students also had the opportunity to participate in Halloween themed centers with our special area teachers outside on our tennis and basketball courts. The big highlight of the day was the return of the Smallwood Halloween Parade. However, this year, we added a twist. Our parents lined our neighborhood streets as our entire school was escorted by the Snyder Fire Department, with all of us having the ability to show our costumes off to all of our parents. Our outside parade was such a hit, we believe that it will now become an annual event here at Smallwood. This fall, we were thrilled to offer Girls on the Run after a year hiatus. Twenty of our third, fourth, and fifth grade girls participated in the program that supports self-confidence, building relationships, and giving back to the community. The program concluded on Saturday, November 6th, with a 5K run in Delaware Park. This past December, Smallwood was part of our virtual winter showcase that had the musical talents of students in grades three through 12 on full display. This vocal collaboration was a first of its kind. Let's take a listen to our third grade students from both Smallwood and Wind of Here. Mrs. Martin will now present on the several initiatives that we are proud to highlight as part of learning and achievement at SDS.
It was so wonderful having our students return to our building this summer for summer school. We invited about 200 students based on academic needs and had approximately 70 students participate in grades kindergarten through fourth. Summer school was three hours and it focused on reading, writing, math, and science. A big thanks to Jen Higgins, who was our director and ran the program on a day-to-day basis. We had wonderful teachers who incorporated themes like the Olympics and had many hands-on science activities to keep our students engaged throughout the summer. At Smallwood, we are excited to have a new health teacher and a new health curriculum that not only includes focus on physical health, but mental health as well. Mr. Durenzo teaches a curriculum created by our own PPS staff that includes self-care and working with feelings and emotions. Every student receives help once a week for an 11-week period, and the students from the first trimester raved about the lessons they learned from Mr. Durenzo. Integrated co-teaching has had a fantastic start at Smallwood this year. The teachers are cooperatively planning and delivering instruction in many ways, meeting the needs of all of the students in their classrooms. I recently observed a fourth grade reading lesson that started with the teachers co-teaching for their input and modeling. They transitioned to parallel teaching for the guided practice, where each teacher took half the class to guide them with the new learning. They moved back to co-teaching for independent practice and closure. All students were engaged and participated, and anyone observing would not have been able to distinguish the difference between the special education students and the general education students during the lesson. The pandemic has stalled the MTSS process at Smallwood last year. We are happy to be able to fully implement it this year. We started with the school-wide FastBridge in September. These benchmarks gave us the ability not only to see where our students were academically, but socially and emotionally as well. Then we met with the teachers to discuss students who were struggling as indicated on FastBridge and on some informal classroom assessments. We continue to monitor students and check in with teachers every six to eight weeks to measure their progress. We will again rescreen all students on FastBridge in January and again in May to continue to try and meet the needs of each individual student. Phonics First and Amplify Science are two programs that were again started pre-pandemic and were not able to be fully implemented last year. This past summer, our kindergarten, first, and second grade teachers attended a three-day training on phonics and implementation of the program. The teachers are working hard to learn and implement the new curriculum this year. Phonics First is a systematic and multisensory approach to teaching phonics skills to all our students. Amplify Science is also its first full year of implementation at Smallwood. The teachers are working with Susan Cyrillic to plan and teach each of the units. Amplify encourages students to ask key questions, complete investigations, and uses a hands-on approach to teach science.
Thank you, Mrs. Martin. There are several initiatives that we are proud to highlight as part of Amherst Pride at Smallwood. We are very excited for the return of extracurriculars in the 2021-22 school year. In addition to intermurals and Girls on the Run that ran in the fall, this winter and spring, we are offering Math Club, Nordic Club, STEM Club, Word Game Club, Art Club, Sign Language Club, Ukulele Club, and Creative Writing Club. We thank the Board of Education and Superintendent Pinella for their support and understanding of the importance that extracurriculars play in the experience and development of elementary students. I'm proud to highlight that the social, emotional well-being of not just our students, but our entire school community remains a top priority at Smallwood. Our mindfulness committee has sponsored monthly events to keep our staff connected throughout this school year. In October, we took a simple walk around the neighborhood on a gorgeous fall afternoon. This past December, close to 60 faculty and staff participated in a socially-distanced, holiday-themed, Smallwood Amazing Race, where teams of five or less competed in several challenges throughout our building. Our mindfulness committee is also committed to supporting SEL in the classroom. Rory'scorner.com is our very own social emotional learning website, with a magnitude of resources for teachers and staff. Our Skill of the Week newsletter, tips for supporting students' social and emotional growth, as well as a wide variety of SEL classroom activities, are all available at just the click of a mouse. For the second year in a row, Smallwood Drive was awarded by Character.org with a promising practice. Character.org is the same organization that recognized our school, our state and national school of characters in 2019. In 2020, Smallwood received a promising practice for The Power of a Puppet, the video series with Mrs. Noe and Rory. In 2021, Smallwood was recognized for our Mantra Mondays, which began as a simple idea of wearing, of wearing a shirt to school with a positive message, but then became so much more. Here is Dr. Arthur Schwartz, president of Character.org, making the big announcement at the National Forum this past fall.
In 2021, Character.org recognized 170 promising practices. Let me put this in, this achievement in some context. This past year, all of us were in the vortex of the pandemic, but these schools, these schools were undeterred. It was uplifting for me to read how so many of our 2021 promising practices were inspired to still create a culture of character despite, despite the challenges presented by COVID. Here's a snapshot of our 2021 promising practices. You know, I reflected a lot on how we should feature some of the, these promising practices. Ultimately, I decided to profile 29 of these promising practices and how each one of them aligns with one of the 11 principles from our 11 principles framework. On to principle two. Principle two is how a school defines character to include thinking, feeling, and doing. We recognized Smallwood for their Mantra Mondays, a practice designed to encourage positive self-talk. During the morning announcements, fifth grade students include a positive mantra and explain its meaning. I also just loved how the school chose the mantra, "We got this," as the theme for the entire year during the pandemic.
To celebrate our recognition, we used our voices again this year when our mindfulness committee sponsored a Make Your Own Mantra t-shirt initiative. Our entire faculty and staff made their own t-shirts in our art room after school throughout the months of October and November. They were proudly on display when we all wore them to school on Wednesday, November 24th. The t-shirt that our team created featured this year's theme of using our voice in a positive way, by being kind, speaking up, and by being encouraging. Our efforts were featured in a recent article in the Amherst Beat. We are proud of this recognition, but even feel better on how it has allowed us to come together and make a difference by using our voice in our community. Mrs. Martin and I thank you for the opportunity to use our voices tonight and to share about Smallwood this evening. We appreciate your continued support of our school. At this time, we would be happy to entertain any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Mr. Crozier, if you could unshare. Great. Thank you for that. Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. Martin or Mr. Crozier? Certainly a very informative presentation. It's nice for us to see all the wonderful things going on in the building under your leadership. You know, certainly, it's been a challenging two and a half years. And one of the things that stands out to me is your efforts in ensuring that our students don't lose out on all the wonderful opportunities that school provides them. So it's clear that you're going above and beyond to try to make sure that the negative effects of the pandemic are mitigated by the positive experience the kids are having in the building. So congratulations on the job well done there. And once again, thank you for your flexibility in being on the agenda, off the agenda, in person, on Zoom. It's just, you know, you roll with it and I appreciate it. So thanks again for being here.
Thank you.
If you, I will, I will not be offended if you want to virtually exit the meeting while we move on with the rest of the agenda and enjoy the rest of your night. So thanks again. And we'll move on to the students and teachers of the month from Amherst High School. Take it away, Ms. Custody. You are muted, Deb, so we can't.
Okay. Were you able to see it when I did share it?
No.
I don't know why it's not sharing again. I had this issue before.
There you go.
Okay. There we go.
Thank you for, as always, for giving us the opportunity to shine a spotlight on the wonderful students and teachers at Amherst Central High School. Tonight, we will be presenting the months of November and December. And without further ado, we will jump right in. Eric Kay. Eric Kay was nominated for Student of the Month in November. Eric is very active in school, Latin Club, Challenge for Change, Student Council, Stage Crew, and has really done a great job. He challenges himself in classes, taking AP courses, and he is known to be a great contributor in class, a positive influence in. and he is known to be a great contributor in class, a positive influence in class, and really puts his best foot forward. He's the type of student that will persist through things that challenge him. And it's kudos to Eric for taking courses that are challenging for him, but he steps up to the plate and does a great job. So congratulations, Eric. Natalie Dorada was nominated as well and has been known to go above and beyond here at Amherst. She has great grades and is a great listener, comes forward with her friends, being a helper to her friends no matter the circumstances. And she really is described as just one of those warm individuals that's a great human being in general. And she was nominated by one of her friends as well. So that's really a great statement when you are nominated by a peer. So congratulations to Natalie. One of our Teachers of the Month extraordinary, Coach Keppel Keenan. She was nominated by Mallory Grubb, and Mallory shared a lot of great things about Coach Keenan, many of which had to do with her great run this season and all of the supports that she does for her team, and specifically Mallory, who really achieves at a high level. And she shared that there's many things that she does for her athletes, for her students, and really keeps a great eye for their mental health and their physical health. She's there for her athletes, she's there for her students, and really is a shoulder to lean on for many, many individuals in our building. One thing about Coach K, she said is she never gives up. She's a persistent person, she's a winner, and that is proven by her being Teacher of the Month, an alumni, and an all-star athlete in her own right, in her own day at Amherst. So she continues to deliver for Amherst. And congratulations to Coach K, Jenny Keppel Keenan, for being nominated as Teacher of the Month. Maybe someone you don't know, Mr. Newport. Mr. Newport came to us last year, what is, was one of our daily subs is in the building. Mr. Newport has the distinction of now being only the second teacher, substitute teacher to ever be nominated for Teacher of the Month, a record that was held for many years by none other than Mr. Ruben Juarez, who is a full-time teacher in the building and an extraordinary individual as well. So congratulations to Mr. Newport. I can't emphasize enough how valuable our daily subs have been in terms of addressing the needs in the building in the past couple of years. And Mr. Newport has stepped up to go above and beyond. He also coaches our track team, and Mr. Newport is very, very well-liked by the students. And that's because he cares about students and really takes a personal interest in their success and their growth and their day-to-day. So a nice smiling face around the building. We don't often see it because it's behind a mask. In fact, when I finally saw Mr. Newport for the first time in June, he looked nothing like I pictured his full face. So congratulations to Mr. Newport, and we're really, really thrilled to have you around helping us out the past couple of years. Moving on to December. In December, our first student nominated was Daraj Bural. I got a number of responses to his nomination, and all of them included the word "hard-working, serious, diligent student." And many of his teachers commented how talented he is in a wide variety of different content areas and in different classes. I think a lot of that has to do with which was noted as his work ethic. He's a serious student, he gets down to business. I think Mr. Crockett noted that when he asked Daraj what he's going to be doing over the break, he said, "Well, working on my science Olympiad preparation." That's the type of kid Daraj is. He works hard all the time and really takes his studies seriously. So congratulations to Daraj. Allison Witten was also nominated in quite a moving write-up by Ms. Fordham, who shared that Allison is just one of those type of students that lights up the room, is very positive. Every insight she shares in class is unique and thoughtful. In fact, Ms. Fordham said that one of her responses once brought her to tears in terms of her response to a reflection based on the novel The Help. She described Allison as maybe a future Betty White or a Cicely Tyson and someone that is potentially capable of winning a Pulitzer Prize one day. Her talents are great, her warmth is felt by many in the room and her teachers, and really adds great insight to everything going on in the class. And that's certainly high praise when you think one of your students has been and can be come a noted novelist. And Ms. Fordham also shared that she would just love to see what Natalie will move on to do and be part of it because she's convinced that Allison is going to be a game changer in this world. So congratulations to Allison on being nominated for Teacher of the Month. And finally, Ms. Montesano, Teacher of the Month for December. New teacher to the building, second year, Ms. Montesano has made a tremendous impact. Mr. Zobel had nominated her and noted a number of things in terms of the great things she does in class, bringing the physics and earth science content to light and really, really being an enthusiastic, energetic teacher that gets students engaged in the sciences. Ms. Montesano has also had a tremendous impact outside of the classroom. She's our new drama club advisor and put on a miraculous performance of Alice in Wonderland. Even under the current restrictions, she innovated, did some wonderful work, and brought in the biggest crowds we've had in drama club history in many, many years, and did so safely and orderly and just put on a great production. So the arts are alive and well at Amherst, and all of the theater arts really are going to be blossoming under Ms. Montesano. And we're really thrilled that she's doing it both inside the classroom and outside the classroom and contributing in so many, many ways. So thank you to all of these students and teachers who contribute to our school in such a meaningful way on a daily basis through what could be described as challenging conditions currently, but bringing bright lights all over the place in terms of our day-to-day at Amherst Central High School. So thank you and enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Well, thank you for that, and that is all I have for the superintendent's report. Hopefully, our next meeting in February will be back to normal at the Windermere Cafeteria as long as everybody's healthy and able to do so. But thank you once again for your flexibility in switching to this virtual format for tonight.
Great, thank you, Mr. Pennella. We will need a motion for new business items.
I'll make a motion for new business items, E1A through Q, 2B through E, 3B through E, G and H.
Do we have a second? Did somebody say yes?
I'll second. I'll second.
Okay, all those, or any discussion, excuse me. All those in favor of approving new business items, E1A through Q, 2B through E, and 3B through E, G and H, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, seven zero. Ms. Custodi, do we have any follow-up action items?
No, we don't.
All right, then we will need a motion to go to executive session.
I'll make a motion to convene to executive session regarding employment of particular person in a student disciplinary appeal.
Do we have a second to that?
A second.
Mrs. Goldhock? All those in favor of convening to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, seven zero. We are now in executive session.